Good morning viewers and listeners of Concerned Citizens Media. Thank you again for joining me. Today is December fifteen, twenty twenty-one. So I have some shorts, maybe. It's not be long like before, but I have some press release from Ethiopia. You know, denouncing or rejecting the upcoming UN Human Rights Council hearing on Ethiopia. So there is very strong press release from Ethiopia Foreign Minister. So I have that one and also South Sudan and Sudan denying Ethiopia's accusation of supporting, you know, TDF. Plus, also I have a video which, you know, a short summary or, you know, just a review of Ethiopia's civil conflict from the beginning to the end. Al Jazeera has very short summary, so I have that one and a couple of other videos. So let's get it started. Thank you again for joining me. So I will start with a press release from Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Ethiopia. Ethiopia once again is perplexed and saddened by the regrettable situation that is unfolding at the United Nations Human Rights Council in Geneva. After months of hard work by the Joint Investigation Team, which made its findings public last month, and after the commitment expressed by the government to implement the recommendations set forth in the report, some in the Human Rights Council, who have utter disregard for the efforts made and work done by the government, have felt the need to call for a special session with the aim to have some sort of an outcome to achieve what seems to be a politically motivated objective. This, of course, is not the first time Ethiopia witnessed such unjust and counterproductive attempt by some to exert political pressure. At the forty-seventh session of the council, despite Ethiopia government's repeated appeal for the council to allow the joint investigation team to complete its work, these countries went on to adopt a resolution that neither involved the country concerned nor considered the call by others to withdraw the resolution. After the release of the above-mentioned joint investigation report, the Ethiopian government welcomed the findings and established a high-level inter-ministerial task force to implement the recommendations therein. What is even more disheartening is the fact that in the midst of these important undertakings and with utter disregard for the work that has been done prior to the commencement of the joint investigation, some members still choose to advance their political agenda through the work of the council. Ethiopia therefore calls on members of the Human Rights Council to categorically reject and vote against the special session, and it is political-motivated outcome. What should have been a priority for the council instead was the urgent task of carrying out an investigation into the violation of human rights and atrocities committed by the TPLF terrorist group in Afar and Amara regional states. It is unfortunate to witness that no such call has come forth from some in the council. This has to be immediately re-rectified. The government of Ethiopia would like to assure members of the Human Rights Council and the international community of its commitment to continue to engage in a constructive manner and fulfill its obligation under international law to respect, protect, and fulfill human rights. So that's very strong statement against some, some members of the Human Rights Council, even though the latter didn't mention, you know. Concerned Citizens Media knows which country they are talking about, even though they didn't mention. They are talking about the United States, they are talking about some European countries. So very strong statement. And so what they fear about this upcoming Human Rights Council meeting, why the Ethiopia is fear of the meeting, what they try to hide. And it says, you know, Ethiopia will fulfill its obligation under international law to respect, protect, fulfill human rights. These are nice words on the paper, but on the ground in Ethiopia, nothing is respected. Nothing, you know, under Abiy Ahmed, nothing is, no respect for international law, no respect for human rights, nothing. Not. People released by the court, rearrested by undercover operatives or by federal police. People are taken from jail and, you know, killed. So so many, so many others. And the Tigrayans and the Ormos are under attack at this time. And the Karayu, fourteen Karayu elders, including Abagadaz or very senior, you know, traditional leaders assassinated and, you know, mass grieved under Abiy Ahmed. So yes, they say a very nice statement, very nice words in paper, but everything is bad about Ethiopia. And Ethiopia is, you know, attempting to threaten some, you know, some security members, you know, Security Human Rights Security Council. This is intimidating later anyway, very intimidating later, and demonizing the United States and other countries who called for this meeting. So we'll see if it's successful and we'll see if they're gonna vote on it or they're gonna reject it, we don't know yet. But that is the response from Ethiopia Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Both Sudan and the South Sudan deny Ethiopia's accusation of, you know, supporting TDF. Sudan on Sunday denies allegation its army providing support to the Tegra People Liberation Front, TPLF, in northern Ethiopia, joining South Sudan, which had dismissed similar accusation on Friday. The semi-official Fana Radio on Thursday repeatedly accuses, repeatedly accusations that the Sudanese army shelters and trains the rebels, TPLF group, in their year-old conflict against the government forces on several fronts. In a statement released on Sunday, the Sudanese Ministry of Foreign Affairs called on Ethiopia to stop accusing Sudan of taking aggressive stance and practices that are not supported by evidence on the ground. The Foreign Ministry further stressed that its forces fully control its border with Ethiopia and had never, and has never, and will never allow to use it for attacks against the Ethiopian army. Relations between Sudan and Ethiopia are strained due to their dispute over the Fashaga border area. Sudanese army regularly clashes with the Ethiopian government-backed Amara militiamen or its army. In Juba, the South Sudanese government had reacted to similar accusations by the Ethiopian government-controlled media. Speaking to reporters after the cabinet meeting on Friday, Michael McQuill, lieutenant minister of information, dismissed allegations that South Sudan provided military logistics to the TPLF rebels. McQuill recalled that Addis Ababa supported the Sudanese, the South Sudanese in their struggle for independence, stressing that they would never support the Tegra rebels to overthrow the government. However, if there are individuals who may be selling arms, then these are the individuals who might be in possession of their own firearms. They are doing it at their own risk, he said. If the Ethiopian government can get hold of those people, then they should be brought to books, he added, credit Sudan review. So that's both Sudan and the South Sudan rejecting Ethiopia's accusation of supporting TDF forces. Okay, joint statement on United States and the Palestinian Authority renewal of the US-Palestinian Economic Dialogue. This really is much, much improving for Palestinians who were isolated during former President, US President Donald Trump. Now, under Biden, they are, you know, feeling secured, getting good treatment, having, you know, economic support. Let's read. The following is a joint statement on the US-Palestinian Economic Dialogue. US and Palestinian officials gather virtually December fourteenth to renew the US-Palestinian Economic Dialogue, USPED. The first such meeting in five years. This senior-level dialogue brought together a wide range of agencies and ministries from the US government and the Palestinian Authority to discuss current and future areas of economic cooperation. Participants recognized the importance of restored political and economic relations between the US government and the Palestinian Authority and pledged to expand and deepen cooperation and coordination across a range of sectors. During the USPED, senior US and Palestinian officials discussed key topics, including infrastructure development, access to US markets, US regulations, free trade, financial issues, renewable energy, and environmental initiatives connecting Palestinian and American businesses and addressing obstacles to Palestinian economic development. The dialogue also included a discussion of international trade relations. The two sides concluded the dialogue, agreeing to work on several crucial issues to advance the economic prosperity of the Palestinian people. The US government outlined programs that could support the Palestinian Authority's effort towards financial issues, trade, and promoting foreign direct investment. This year's dialogue was a treatment to the importance of US-Palestinian economic relations and the opportunity to increase collaboration on economic issues of shared importance. During opening remarks, US Assistant Secretary for Near Eastern Affairs, Yael Lampere, underscored the Biden-Harris administrations' belief that the Palestinian people deserve to live in freedom, security, and prosperity. She noted, growing the Palestinian economy will also play a crucial role in advancing our overreaching political goal and negotiated two-state solution with a verbal Palestinian state living side by side in peace and security with Israel. So that's very encouraging joint statement on the economic dialogue between Palestinian Authority and US government. And I appreciate Concerned Citizens Media, I appreciate the Biden administration initiative to help these, you know, victims, victims, you know. Palestinians are the victims of injustice in the Middle East, really. Constant conflict, endless conflict, bombardment. And I hope the two-state solution will come sooner than later to end the suffering. There's another State Department press release. The politically motivated convictions of Belarusian opposition figures. The United States condemns today's politically motivated conviction of Belarusian opposition figures, Siary Sikhanovski, Mikhail Statekovich, radio liberty journalist Ahar Lusik, and others in judicial proceeding that do not conform to the rule of law. Belarusian courts harshly sentenced Mr. Sakhanovski to eighteen years, Mr. Stetkovich to fourteen years, and Mr. Lusik to fifteen years in prison. Neither these individuals nor the Belarusian people warrant such harsh repression. Belarus has obligation under international law as well as a commitment as an OSCE participating state to respect the right to a fair trial by independent and impartial tribunal as well as the rights of the individual to freedom of expression, association, and peaceful assembly. Regrettably, these sentences are further evidence of the regime's disregard for these international obligations as well as for the human rights and fundamental freedoms of Belarusians. The Belarusian people deserve better. We reiterate our call for the Lukashenko regime to end its crackdown on members of civil society, independent media, the political oppositions, athletes, students, legal professionals, and other Belarusians to immediately release all of the more than nine hundred political prisoners, including Mr. Sikhanovski, Mr. Lusik, Mr. Stetkovich, and others to engage in a genuine dialogue with the democratic forces and the civil society to hold free and fair elections under international obligation, to stop its cruel exploitation of vulnerable migrants, and to respect its obligation under international law. So that's a very strong statement from the United States on a serious crackdown in Belarus. Lukashenko is a dictator and he has been in power for a while and he's just claiming like election victory, even though so many disputed. Okay. Commending the European Union's sanctions action against Wagner Group and affiliates. Press statement, there's also another one. The United States welcomed the European Union's action to sanction the Russian-backed Wagner Group and its associates. These actions underscore our joint commitment to respond to this organization's destabilizing action in multiple regions, conflict including Ukraine, Syria, Libya, Central African Republic, and the Sahel region. We applaud the European Union for its commitment to promoting respect for human rights around the world as well as upholding the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine. The United States, along with EU and our partners, will continue to promote our shared democratic value using the tools at our disposal. And once again, call on the international partners to adopt sanctions structures that can address these challenges. Credit State Department. So that's a sanctioning of Russian company or Russian government-backed company. And, you know, it's bad for, to settle the Ethiopian issue because of such, you know, conflict between the United States and Russia and between the United States and China. Because China and Russia are, you know, the veto power UN Security Council members and there are the challenge, anything the US or Ireland or the UK bring to the UN Security Council for any adoption, resolution on Ethiopia. You can't get it, you can't get it. Number one, we have the issue between the United States and Russia, the United States and China. And because of that, they will not cooperate with the United States. They will not cooperate. Especially we repeatedly saw in the case of Ethiopia, eleven times. Whatever happened, China and Russia say, no, Ethiopians can resolve their issue. We don't have to involve, but people are dying, the bloody war is still continuing. So, you know, that is the issue, complex. Okay, thank you, that's the reading part. And let's see the review of the Al Jazeera on the conflict, the civil conflict in Ethiopia in a very short time. And a couple of other videos. Let's see what they say. Some of the claims Al Jazeera has is the government side. So you have to be aware, you know, who started conflict. And TDF attacked the northern from command, blah, blah, all this. No, some, so let's listen.
Let's talk about Ethiopia. For a long time, it was seen as one of Africa's big success stories. With a booming economy and a charismatic leader who won the Nobel Peace Prize. But right now, things are looking really bad. The conflict between the government and Tegra rebels is escalating. A civil war fueled by ethnic divisions has been going on for a year. The front lines keep shifting, and there has even been talk that the fighting could reach the capital Addis Ababa. There are reports of massacres, sexual violence, and accusations that food is being used as a weapon of war by all sides.
There is something like twenty million Ethiopians who are in need of some form of aid at the moment.
So who's fighting who? And what are they fighting about? Let's start with the big picture. Ethiopia is about the size of France and Spain combined. It has the second biggest population in Africa with lots of different ethnic groups. There's a federal government based in Addis Ababa, led by Prime Minister Abiy Ahmed. And there are eleven regions. They're mostly divided according to different ethnic groups. And each region has its own government. Tegra way up north is where most of the fighting has been happening over the past year. It's led by the Tegra People's Liberation Front, the TPLF. Now, all this started because of a power struggle between the TPLF and the federal government. But it's gone way beyond that now.
The TPLF has been working to destabilize the country, committing many acts that threaten the unity of the people and the sovereignty and existence of the country.
He's been doing everything in his power to make sure that the people of Tegra continue to find themselves at the receiving end of his genocidal campaign.
Now we've moved into a phase where both sides believe that they are fighting an existential struggle for their survival.
What you have to understand is the TPLF used to run things. They dominated Ethiopia's national politics for nearly thirty years as the main party in a coalition government, although Tigrayans only make up six percent of the population. It was a time of huge economic growth, but the TPLF were also accused of being autocratic and corrupt. In twenty eighteen, huge protests brought them down and swept Abiy Ahmed into power. And right after he was elected, he made some big changes. He freed thousands of political prisoners who'd been thrown in jail by the previous government and surprised everyone with a peace deal with Eritrea. That's what he got his Nobel Peace Prize for. He also tried to centralize the government more. He created a new national party that brought together the main ethnic political groups. But the TPLF refused to take part, and they were suspicious of Abi's big plans to open up politics and the economy. There was a sense he was trying to boost the power of the government in Addis Ababa at the expense of the regions.
The TPLF believed that Abiy Ahmed was consolidating his power by completely undermining their legacy.
So you had all this political jockey. And then in twenty twenty, there were supposed to be federal and regional elections, but the government delayed them, saying it was because of COVID. That didn't go down well with the TPLF.
They went ahead and ran their election in defiance of federal authority. And this led to a process where the federal government said that Tegra's government was not legal and constitutional, and Tegra's government made the same accusation against the federal government.
And that's when the fighting started. Forces loyal to the TPLF attacked a government military base in Tegra. Then Abi sent troops. At first, government forces had the upper hand. They quickly took control of Tegra's capital, Mekelle, and Abi declared victory. But it wasn't over. The TPLF forces kept fighting back. And you also had Eritrean troops joining in. They came over the border in the north to fight on the federal government's side. But by the end of June, and despite Eritrean involvement, there was a complete reversal. The TPLF were back in control of Mekelle and most of Tegra. And they didn't stop there. They pushed into the neighboring regions of Amhara and Afar. Then there was another big development, this time in the Eromia region, where there's an armed group called the Oromo Liberation Army, the OLA. They have their own issues with Abi. They decided to ally themselves with the TPLF, which means now you've got a kind of opposition alliance that wants to defeat Abi. Several groups from other regions say they've joined too. The OLA are fighting from the south and the Tigrayans from the north. And they both say they're determined to push towards the capital. Now, when the TPLF forces took control of two strategic towns in late October, that threat suddenly looked pretty serious. But by early December, the government said its forces had recaptured those towns. So the military balance seems to be shifting again.
It seems to be a pretty fluid situation. There's huge amounts of mobilization on the federal side, including the prime minister going to the battlefield himself.
So that's how the fighting has played out so far. But what about the civilians? Well, it's been devastating and brutal. Well, it's been devastating and brutal. All sides involved have been accused of atrocities.
People have been attacked, uh, schools, uh, hospitals, church, mosque, in addition to unlawful killing, uh, execution, uh, torture, and a huge number of, uh, you know, sexual, sexual and gender-based violence.
More than two million people have been forced to leave their homes to escape the fighting. There are estimates that hundreds are dying every day in Tegra because there isn't enough food. And the U N says millions are at risk of starvation.
This boy is a victim of what the U N says is the world's worst hunger crisis.
Only a trickle of food has been getting through, nowhere near what's needed. Both the government and T P L F forces are accused of restricting aid deliveries into areas they control. There have also been reports of horrific massacres, like in Axum, a town in Tegra, where Eritrean forces killed hundreds of people, according to Amnesty International. And in Mykodra, another town in Tegra, where up to six hundred civilians were reportedly killed. Witnesses later said that forces linked to the T P L F were responsible.
There is a threat of incredibly serious consequences from this Ethiopian civil war in the form of famine, potentially genocide, potentially state collapse, potentially.
To end the fighting, what Ethiopia really needs is some kind of negotiated settlement. But right now, there's no sign that anyone is willing to come to the table, let alone make any concessions. If you found that useful, we have loads more explainers on the Start Here playlist on Al Jazeera's YouTube channel. Check it out.
Yeah, okay, that's a good review of the conflict since the Abiy came to power. This is on Iran.
The Security Council sees today of a grave issue. For two years now, Iran has been taking unprecedented steps and recently accelerated the pace of most sensitive violations of the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action. Iran has also curtailed monitoring by the International Atomic Energy Agency, leaving the international community with less knowledge of the statutes, the Iranian nuclear programs. Iran's nuclear program has never been more advanced than it is today. This nuclear escalation is undermining international peace and security and the global non-proliferation system. France, Germany, and the U- United Kingdom remain committed to the full implementation of the G C P O A and U N Security Council Resolution twenty-two thirty-one. We are working tirelessly and in good faith with all partners in Vienna to deliver a deal to save and restore the G C P O A. Iran has worked back hard-fought compromises reached after many weeks of challenging negotiations, while at the same time presenting additional maximalist demands. We are nearing the point where Iran's escalation of its nuclear program will have completely hollowed out the G C P O A. The diplomatic door is firmly open for Iran to a deal now. Iran has to choose between the collapse of the G C P O A and a fair and comprehensive deal for the benefit of the Iranian people and nation. Iran's continued nuclear escalation means that we are rapidly reaching the end of the road.
The end of the road means maybe the beginning of the war with Iran on a nuclear issue. Okay, one more. This is the last video. It's a drive, uh, a toy drive for, uh, Christmas for children's, you know, for children's might need those toys. So it's a drive for, uh, as you can see, the sports fans dropped the toys for children. Okay, that's the end. Thank you uh, so much for joining me. So the Iran issue is very serious. We have to watch it, you know, very seriously. Even though we don't have, you know, the power to do anything. I hope they will come to the table and agree, uh, to settle the matter peacefully instead of, uh, uh, going to war. Uh, that's, uh, the door for diplomacy ending, as he said, and the door may be, uh, for war. And Israel repeatedly threatened to attack the nuclear sites repeatedly. And they are also conducting joint exercise with the United States for the eventuality if something, you know, decide to do. So this is very serious challenge we have, uh, on for the world. How do you deal with it? How do you settle? And, uh, you know, we know, uh, the world is not fair. Israel, even though it's not declared, Israel has a nuclear bomb, but nobody will talk about that. They all are talking about Iran and they want to dismantle the Iran nuclear program. Iran say have a right, you know, for peaceful nuclear energy. That's the argument. They are coming back and forth and I hope they will come to a peaceful settlement. We just wish, you know, we are tired of war. War is costly. So that's all I have, uh, for today. Thank you for joining me. Please, uh, share, subscribe, and like my videos. I'll be back with other updates. And, uh, I like the review, uh, the Al Jazeera review, very short review of the whole, uh, you know, incident, war, and everything from twenty eighteen until twenty twenty-one. So that's, that's enough for today. Thank you, uh, everyone, and be safe. So long.